What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands? One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thomas, could you take the roll, please?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Vaschista.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Askin. Obawa.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
David Corn, your honor.
Thank you. Item number one is a motion of the adoption of the agenda with the addition. So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is a motion approving the minutes from our November 1st, 2021 meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nothing under item number three, recognitions and awards. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is under bid opening an award, receiving bids for an EQ digester cover replacement project. Stephen.
If it's all right with the council, I'll go over items five, A, B, and C all at once, and then you guys turn it back over to you to decide on those. Does that work?
Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So from time to time, we will do a reconstruction of some infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant. And typically, those costs for that infrastructure are split between either domestic or industrial or a combination of both. And the project we have before you tonight is a project that is 100% part of our industrial plant, which means that 100% of the costs are billed directly or paid for directly by Hormel Foods Company. So when doing a project like this, we enter into an agreement with them to, that calls out kind of the repayment structure and the overall project and what it all entails. We reviewed this with the council probably about a month ago at a work session for this upcoming project. And some of the details of the agreement include, we have a master, 30-year master agreement with Hormel to accept their discharge. That 30-year agreement was started in 1995 and goes until 2025, so that's coming up and will be discussed as part of our larger treatment plant project. But anytime we make changes in those 30 years, we do addendums to that original agreement. And that is part of the document in front of you tonight. It calls out that Hormel will pay 100% of the costs for the EQ digester cover. They will reimburse the city on a monthly basis. So essentially, what we will do is we will pay the contractor as construction occurs, we'll pay the contractor on a monthly basis. And then we will turn around and bill Hormel for whatever cost was paid out to that contractor. We expect this project to be about a 10-month project where we have a long lead time here at the beginning for fabricating materials. But the general construction of the project will occur in the summer of 2022. So that's when a large majority of the costs will be incurred by the city and then billed to Hormel for the construction cost. For the project costs itself, we have the capital, the actual new digester cover cost is $1,973,800. We have engineering design costs that have already occurred to get us to this point of $40,000. We have construction management costs because it's such a long, drawn-out, 10-month project. It draws out also some of those onsite inspection costs. And then lastly, we would have a fourth item for legal and administrative, and we don't have any of those costs on this project. So the total cost in our agreement with Hormel is $2,133,800. And again, we have listed there the proposed construction schedule. So with that, we have, this document has been reviewed by Hormel, and they are in agreement with the document. One key thing for us to take, consider is with Hormel paying 100% of the costs, we want to make sure that we keep them in the loop during the construction phase of the project. And also make sure that if we do have any change orders, we'll be closely in contact with them if there are any changes that need to occur in the overall construction. So that is item A. Item B is the actual construction bids. We opened up bids for this project on November 4th, and we had four bidders on the project. We set the project up to give the contractors as much flexibility as possible, trying to minimize the costs or be as efficient as possible with this project. So we set up a base bid that included many of the standard components of the digester cover. Then we bid an alternate number one, which was for a completely new cover. And then we also took prices on alternate number two, which was to salvage some of the existing parts of the existing cover and reuse them with a new cover. So you can see that the four contractors that bid the project all looked at it a little bit differently. Some of them looked at salvaging those materials from the existing cover to actually be more expensive than just constructing new. But ultimately, with whatever alternate we chose, Wapishaw Construction was the low bidder. We reviewed their two prices, proposals, and you can see that alternate number two salvaging some of the existing materials provided a cost savings of about $42,000 to $43,000 on a $2 million project. When we reviewed this, we didn't feel that that was enough value to make it worthwhile to save those 20-year-old materials and reuse them. So in discussions with Hormel, they are in agreement as well of that. And based on that, we would recommend awarding the base bid an alternate number one, which is a completely new cover to Wapishaw Construction for this project. Finally, the third part, item C of number five, is the construction management, the inspection of the actual work. Again, it's drawn out over a period of time, but these first few months, we'll be reviewing shop drawings, making sure materials that are being constructed are what were specked out on the project. And then there will be about three months of construction where the cover will be fabricated and put together, kind of like a jigsaw puzzle, onsite on the ground, and then it will be lifted into place. And we call out in specifications multiple requirements for welding, coatings that are required as part of the project. The liquid that is stored in these tanks is highly corrosive. So the coatings are a key part of making sure this cover will be long-lasting. And in order to do that inspection, SEH has provided us a proposal in the amount of $120,000 to complete this work. They've estimated a lot of items in there, and it's very detailed. So that when we actually do get into construction, we'll be able to track the cost and know if we are underrunning those inspection costs. Or if we're starting to track high, we can look at different options to try to keep it within budget. So those are the three components, items five, A, B, and C. And I'll turn it back to council if you have any questions for me about any of them.
Well, thank you for the thorough explanation. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Wang?
I have a question. You said four people bid already. Do we have any to say, like who to pick among the bidder for the construction?
Wapshaw?
The B, like awarding, you said. I don't know if I get that wrong.
Is the question who they want to choose to do the work?
Do we have to say? Do city council have a say in it, or are we the one who's speaking?
Sure. We certainly have a say.
Oh, okay.
Do you have some discussion you want to work around that?
No, I was just making sure.
Okay, yeah. Stephen, any clarification on the bidders?
Just for Obawa there, typically, we award it to the lowest bidder. We want to, if we would reject that lowest bid and incur the extra cost to award the project to a higher bidder, maybe it's the local contractor in this case, we would really need to have justification as to why we aren't going to go with the low bid. That's really how we set up our bids for the city, whether it's street construction or a project like this. We want to show to the public that we are using those dollars wisely and therefore awarding those contracts to the low bidder unless something has been set up prior to allow us to evaluate, maybe give more points to a local contractor versus an out-of-town contractor. But again, that's not how this project is set up.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
All right. If nothing else, look for a resolution for 5A, approving the agreement with Hormel Foods. So move the resolution. Your second? Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Obsteen.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor, with one abstaining.
Thank you. Also, under 5B, looking for a resolution awarding the bid. So moved. Second? Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Obsteen.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0 with one abstaining, your honor.
And the last, 5C, approving a design service contract with SEH, looking for resolution. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Obsteen.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0 with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to item number six is a resolution setting a public hearing for December 20th, 2021 for the adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Very good, thank you. Item number seven is a motion authorizing the city recorder to sign a waiver stating the city does not waive statutory tort limits. Tom?
On an annual basis, as part of our insurance renewal with the League of Minnesota Cities, we're required to complete a questionnaire, one of which questions includes, does the city want to not waive the statutory tort limits, which limits the liability by statute for which a city could get sued for it? Some cities choose to waive it because they feel responsible and are willing to pay millions of dollars for which they then get reinsurance for. But from the city's Austin side, we would recommend and request council agree to not waive the statutory tort limits.
Okay. Any questions for Tom? If not, looking for a motion for number seven. All move.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution granting 2022 off-sale liquor, or off-sale licenses, club on-sale licenses, and wine on-sale licenses. Ann, welcome.
Hi, this is our first round of licensing that we have. These particular liquor licenses have to go to the state for signature too, so it's a co-issued license. So these need to be approved tonight so we can send them up, get them signed, and get them back before the end of the year. And then the rest of the liquor licenses will be at the December meeting.
Tom? Any questions for Ann? If not, looking for a resolution for item number eight. So move the resolution.
I second.
Okay. Please hold for the roll call. Multitasking. Thank you, Tom. Could you get a roll call, please, for item number eight?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Item number nine is a resolution setting polling locations for 2022 elections. Ann?
Yes, so we have to do this every year. The legislature requires us to set the polling locations. And we're going to revert back to our normal polling locations before COVID happened. I know we were all at the Holiday Inn in 2020, which worked because over 50% of our voters went, did absentee voting. We're not sure what that number will be, and we don't want to put us all in one location if that absentee vote kind of goes down over time. So I would request that we set our typical polling locations for 2022.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? If not, looking for a resolution for item number nine. So move the resolution.
Second.
Thomas?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a motion reappointing Mary Lindgren to the Austin Moore County homeownership fund. The term expiring will be December 31, 2024. Tom?
The city and the county both have a joint powers agreement whereby we loan up to $6,000 for closing costs or down payment assistance for houses within the city of, within Moore County, for which two council members serve on that board, as does our honorary council member. We have a board member that is, her term is expiring at the end of this year, Mary Lindgren, and we'd like to have her reappointed for another three-year term. She's finishing up her 10th year on the board, and she's been great to have on the board, so we'd request a reappointment. And she's willing to serve for twice the pay of zero.
And that's, I see moving her from a DCA liaison. Is that something different? Is she on for DCA now?
She's always been on as a member of the DCA.
DCA, okay.
DCA is, John Gary's requested that she be reappointed also.
Thank you. Happy to hear she's working for zero. That's great stuff. Number 10, looking for the motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11 is a motion authorizing billing Gregory and Cynthia Lowe $7,906.64 for 2016 street improvements. Stephen?
Many of you may recall that in 2016, we were planning to reconstruct Fourth Drive Southwest from Calvary Cemetery south to the city limits and beyond. And as part of that project, we received three objections to our assessments. Since that time, one of those objections has been resolved in full. And the other two assessments were related to property owned by Greg and Cynthia Lowe. They recently came in and were discussing the sale of one of their properties. And that resulted in them paying the assessment for the property at 2203 Fourth Drive Southwest, again, in full. So two of the three assessments have been resolved, and the only outstanding one is, again, for Greg and Cynthia Lowe for their home located at 2111 Fourth Drive Southwest. That original assessment in 2016 was $13,748.56. And the reason it was considerably more than other areas of town is because of the large lots that we have along Fourth Drive. This lot in particular had 245 feet of frontage. And our assessment policy is based on roadway frontage. So this lot is three to four times larger than many of our residential lots within the city where we're normally working in older neighborhoods. So that's what resulted in the original large assessment. As I was discussing this with the property owners, we looked at, how can we resolve this and get this taken care of along with the other assessment that they were paying? And we looked at their lot, and although it has that large amount of frontage, 245 feet, a portion of the northerly portion of the lot is generally undevelopable because of the floodplain encroachment. If you look on the attached map that was included in your backup material, you can see how the floodplain on the north side of the house comes up and starts to encroach closer to the roadway and essentially makes the northerly portion of their lot unbuildable. When we look at how that fits with their frontage, there's about 104 feet of frontage that would be very tight for building a house based on our floodplain regulations. And what I proposed to them and what I indicated to them that I would advocate for tonight at our meeting is that we would remove 104.32 feet of their frontage assessment. And the remainder, which is 141.19, would be their new assessment amount. That, what that does is that brings, with that reduced frontage, it brings their assessment down to what would be $7,906.64. The homeowners were in agreement with that, felt that that was a fair compromise, as do I as well, based on the floodplain boundary. And the homeowners would actually pay this, they wouldn't request it to be spread out on their taxes, but rather would pay this directly if council is in agreement tonight, which is what we would recommend, that we would then bill the homeowner directly, and this would finalize our last outstanding assessment for this project. With that, I'll put it up to the council if you have any questions.
Counsel? All right. Then looking for a motion for item number 11. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephen, for taking care of that. Item number 12 is a motion authorizing $20,000 of parks equipment, capital dollars for the replacement playground surface. Kevin?
Mayor and council members, as was noted in my overview memo, the playground and underlying surface, that rubber tile protection surface were new and installed at Morning Lion's Park just over three years ago. This rubber tile surface was utilized laid over the top of an asphalt base as the more preferential poured-in-place or the one-piece surface is not suitable for use within a floodplain due to its porous nature. The rubber tile began showing some signs of deterioration last year, and this year, cracks were evident along many of the seams. Department staff earlier this year replaced the worst of what spare tiles we had on hand and also contacted the sales rep indicating our dilemma at that time. The manufacturers were slow to respond in this process, but knowing that they had a faulty product, even though there was no written warranty, they offered us credit toward the purchase of a new surface to their company. However, their product pricing inclusive of the credit was in the range of the other quote, which was presented in your packet for tonight. And they were offering only a five-year warranty. And then I added then that it would seem that a cash refund in that credit amount would be in order. They agreed to the refund of just under $18,000, which is right around 50% of what we paid for the surface. So the intent is to apply this refund toward the purchase of a replacement surface, coupling it with the approximately $20,000 which is remaining in the 2021 capital dollars, which are already designated for playground equipment. So my request tonight is for the approval of that expenditure of 20K in capital funding toward a replacement rubber surface.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? If not, looking for a motion for item number 12. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13 is a resolution reviewing the lot split request from First Name Methodist Church. Holly, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is a property located in our downtown area. The Methodist Church has a parcel adjacent to their existing property. They wish to sell a portion of that to their neighbor, Classon Jordan Mortuary, to the north, and retain a portion for themselves. At this point, is my understanding, they'll just be using that area for parking. But they, there's nothing else really other than that. The staff, city staff and Austin Utilities did review the proposed split and did not have any objections.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Holly? If not, looking for a resolution for 13A, approving or denying the lot split request. So move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number 14 is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at 204 Fourth Street Southeast, the Hernandez property. In the motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15 in the addition section is a motion approving up to $19,500 in contingency funds for carpeting and a DS remodel in the city council chambers. Craig?
Thank you, mayor members. We've gotten some estimates on the carpet, wanted to move forward. We just got those in today, so we wanted to move forward. The lead time on the Dallas remodel apartment is about four weeks after they come back down and do the drawings and that, so we wanted to get moving on that. So we'd ask for your approval.
Counsel, any questions on item number 15? Looking for a motion, then. So moved. Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Vaschista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Nay.
Motion passes 5-1, your honor.
Thank you. Under citizens addressing counsel, I'm assuming Eric, you have anything for us? Your only citizen present will be on Zoom.
Nothing important.
Thank you. Honorary council members comments. Chris, do you have anything?
I don't. I'm not getting a microphone if I don't.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Reports and recommendations. Craig?
Yes, we had the House Capital Investment Committee in Austin last Tuesday at Riverland for our wastewater treatment plant request of 14.5 million. Things seemed to go well. We also have the Senate Capital Investment Committee coming in on next Wednesday here from 8:00 to 9:00. And they'll be meeting out at the plant. So we rolled out a red carpet at the wastewater treatment plant once again. We're all looking, we're working on the federal EDA grant for improvements in Creekside Business Park. From the estimate we had in the council resolution, looks like we have costs increased considerably there. So we're looking for a special meeting on the 22nd at 4:00 PM. If council can let me know if that works for you. Should be hopefully a short meeting to discuss and adopt a new resolution so we can submit that grant, which is time-sensitive. Otherwise, Mr. Dankert and Ms. Kleinfeldter have items.
Tom?
Just wanted to let council know that on our website is the PowerPoint Truth in Taxation presentation. We'll be sending it out or uploading it to Dropbox with council shortly. We're waiting for the actual truth in taxation statement samples to get out from Moore County before we upload everything, including the detailed budget, line item by line item. But just like council, if you want to see the PowerPoint, it is out there on the city's website.
It is worth a view. It's, Tom's PowerPoint is dynamic. It also is very educational. To have that, you know, it's not the most entertaining topic, but Tom did a nice job with graphics and make it easily understandable. So thank you, Tom, on that. Ms. Kleinfeldter?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, my Zoom is being problematic tonight. So I just wanted to remind everyone that our social justice book club is going to be this Thursday night at 6:00. The book is Disability Visibility. And if that isn't of interest to you, we are also having our Reading for Life book discussion on To Kill a Mockingbird tomorrow night at 6:00. And if you're interested in either one of those, you can contact the library, and we'll get those Zoom links sent. And I will not be having technical problems tomorrow night.
Okay, we're hopeful. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. On to reports from council. Joyce?
Nothing, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mikey?
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing, your honor.
Jeff?
Nothing, your honor.
Paul?
Nothing.
Obawa?
I just want to shout out to former mayor Barney for bringing the visitors from St. John. I think we had a great visit yesterday. And the story of Austin being one of the coolest city around and for the visitor to come down and speak to our residents, speak to our leaders. I think that's sending a message out there, you know. We no longer will tell about ourselves, but other people talking about how Austin is cool. So, and that will attract more people to move in town and businesses. So I applaud the work of the mayor and also the city administrator, especially Mayor Barney, for being actively involved in the community.
Yeah, that was great event last night, no doubt. Very touching. I guess I'd just like to add that, you know, from where I sit here now, it's, it always amazes me how excellent our city staff are. And so to have the bonding committee come down to Riverland, and we only had 10 minutes among other folks that are really asking for the state for some bonding money. And potentially, it is our biggest asset, and it's a big ask of a $80,000 project, ask 14.5 million from the state. But to watch Craig and Mr. Wang go through that quickly, 10 minutes, to have that, that kind of a deft of touch to get the impact across both on the engineering side and as well as on the political side, it was really wonderful to watch. So we got some very gifted folks that are moving us forward, and I certainly appreciate everything that you do, Craig. And you and Stephen did an outstanding job as a Starsky and Hutch or a Posh and John, whatever it is duo out there. It was excellent. So now we'll do the Senate side of it out there at the facility, and we just, we're
So now we'll do the senate side of it out there at the facility, and, and we just, uh, we're, we're honored that they at least take the time to come down, um, in, in big buses and big, and, and a lot of folks, so we're getting the attention we need. We just got to get it across the finish line, so it's, it's, uh, it's remarkable that we're getting that kind of attention paid for this project, and, uh, we're happy to have that attention as well. And so I think that's all we have. Any, nobody else?
No, sir.
So we'll look for a motion to adjourn to Monday, December sixth, at five thirty.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned in around five minutes until we get the work session going.
Excellent.
Thank you.